Good evening, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order. Board of Education Business Meeting. Let's start with the items to be removed from the consent agenda. If a board member wishes to remove an item on the consent agenda for further discussion, a motion to remove item from consent agenda must be made. However, once a motion and second are made for the consent agenda items listed below, simple questions can be asked regarding any of them as you would normally do for individual resolutions. Consent agenda: A, approval of minutes of 10, 620 study session; B, personnel actions; C, treasurer's report; D, acceptance of extra classroom activity fund account for the high school and homics for July, August, and September; E, approval of vendor agreements and amendments; F, acceptance of arrangements for appropriate special programs and services as recommended by the CSC, CPSE; and G, acceptance of gifts and donations. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Sylvia, anything to report on the treasurer's report?
No, I think it's all in order. The extra classroom activity funds are one of the things that there were auditors comments on, and we've been working very closely with them to put them onto our financial software and help them improve their systems.
Any other items on the consent agenda? I know we have a gift and donation. Gladys, prior to accepting it, would you like to read what that gift and donation?
Okay. My favorite part, gifts and donations. So we accepted a donation of two FIRE SDA tablets, 32 gigabytes from the Winchester Bank and its employees committee, TWB for United Committee from Amaroni Schools. So thank you very much to the Winchester Bank for that donation of these two tablets.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. For the community, we're going to change things around a little bit. Dr. McGibben is joining us for his report, the demographic report presentation. So right now, we're going to move to presentations first, Dr. McGibben, and then Lana Associates is going to give the update on our capital plan. After that, we will open to questions the board, followed by the community, just on those two presentations. Following that, we're going to go to the superintendent's report and committee reports, and then we will shift to the business agenda. We have 16 items on the business agenda, and out of respect for our presenters, we are going to have them go first prior to the business agenda. We will open for another round of some questions after the superintendent's report. So with that, Bob, I'm going to turn it over.
Thank you, Reena. So it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jerome McGibben, who will provide an update of a summary of his spring 2020 population enrollment forecasting report for the years 2020, 21 through 2029, 30. Dr. McGibben is a national demographer with 30 years of experience analyzing school district demographics and enrollment trends. He has produced several reports for, I mean, excuse me, 1,500 school districts across the country. To get a sense of his national perspective, this week Jerry will share report findings with a school district in Montana, Indiana, New York State, and later this week, Mississippi. Before I turn things over to Jerry, I wanted to remind the Board of Education and community that as a product of the final report, May 2019, of the district's enrollment task force, the group shared several recommendations or next steps for the Board of Ed as a group to consider to help the district and community address long-term challenges to limited space and growing enrollment. In a follow-up meeting in the fall of 2019, the Board of Education asked the administration to move forward and focus on two specific recommendations. The first was to engage the services of an experienced demographer to conduct an independent population and enrollment forecast. And it's our pleasure to welcome Dr. McGibben this evening to share his report and summarize an update based on what has changed since March. In addition to that, the task force asked, and certainly the board recommended, the effort to continue to explore potential design changes through district schools that will address space constraints while providing opportunities to improve and enhance students' educational experience. The group at the time recommended the district collect and examine data on student performance related to changes in this, in a physical learning environment. Discussion this evening and the report that Dr. McGibben is about to give is about sharing data on enrollment trends that may impact instructional space, operating budgets, and programmatic experience in the future. This is a strategic effort on our part to really plan for, beginning to plan for, understand what may unfold. This discussion tonight, and I think it's important to point out, is not any decision to change how we configure schools. And I think it's important that we go back to the enrollment task force and the recommendation to say, how can we use the outside expertise to help us understand what may influence enrollment change in our particular schools, in our community, that may impact the district in the future? And so I think, I want to caution everybody. The last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Jerry is that in the work of the district equity team, we put together a series of goals for a strategic plan. That work is really trying to understand, as members of the enrollment task force began to do, the impact of how we organize and deliver education through the equity lens. And so I would say, just as I referred to the ongoing recommendations of the task force, that in the coming months, it is the responsibility, certainly in the interest of the board administration, to start to look at not only the enrollment projections, but through multiple lens, the fiscal lens, the efficiency lens, the opportunity lens, and the equity lens of how we want to think about organizing our schools for the future for the benefit of all children. And so with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. McGibben, who will provide highlights of his March report. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, Benham Chairperson, members of the board. If you can go back one slide for a second. Bob, can, three things I want to cover before I get into the actual forecast results. One, in the category of timing is everything. We finished these, I think, two weeks before the COVID epidemic hit. So, you know, just wonderful timing. So if some of these assumptions you see and all that look somewhat out of date, they are. And we'll, we'll address as we go through. Two, don't let that Rock Hill, South Carolina fool you. You'll notice I do not have a southern accent. And one thing Robert didn't mention is I did my bachelor's at SUNY Geneseo, my master's at Syracuse. So a lot of my former classmates up there, a few from downstate that we still keep in contact with, actually quite familiar for the area. I think my, my first trip to Marama Mac was, oh geez, 35 years ago now when I first came down there. Again, some of my college friends. And third, probably most important, these are forecasts. They are not projections. They're two different things. A projection is where you take some trend, usually year-to-year survivorship in enrollment, second to third, third to fourth, over like a five-year period of time, create an algorithm, and then literally project into the future, given those trends, very quick, very easy, until about the late 1990s, about the only method you had for enrollment forecasting. The only problem with the projection is they're almost never correct. For the only way for a projection to be correct is what's happened the last five years replicates itself over the next five or 10. Okay? And boy, if there's ever an example of them not working right now would be these COVID times, because what's happened the last five years will not replicate itself over the next five or 10. A forecast, and this is a two-step procedure, the first thing we do is do a full population forecast, zero to four, 85 plus, all your four attendance areas, sum it up to the district level, build a fertility and mortality and migration model specific to each area, built on each area's own demographic dynamics and characteristics. We don't use national models, state models, even regional models. All the models built here are specific to the demographic dynamics of the Marama Mac School District. Okay? The results of that population forecast then drives an enrollment forecast. So it's your current and future demographic trends which dictate your enrollment, not your past enrollment trends. So it's a completely different focus. Now, anytime you're, you're doing the forecast, you must have assumptions. These are broad socioeconomic demographic parameters in which we build the models, and then many of them are micro, but some are specific to the school district. Bob, next slide. Okay, first one, right off the bat, don't go into a deep recession. Well, we're in a recession already. Question is, will it be deep? We've had a bad second quarter, not quite as bad third quarter, fourth's not going to be that good. Some economists think we'll be back to GDP growth by the first quarter next year. I'm all skeptical on that myself, but where this will be a very sharp recession, we don't know if it's going to be deep, whereas it lasts more than four quarters. Two, 30-year fixed rate stays below 5%. Well, 30-year fix this morning was under threes. We're pretty safe on that one. But go down to number seven, and that's a very important one. This is a tactic you'll hear over and over again in this presentation. The district will experience at least 240 existing family homes, new, similar family home sales in the next, annually the next 10 years. Despite what you hear in the news about all the new home construction going on, even in the United States today, 90% of the housing market is existing home sales. And particularly for areas like Marama Mac where you're, you're pretty well-built out, you don't have that much area to build new homes, existing home sales is always going to be the dominant factor and continue to will be. And the dynamics of the home sales market is really bizarre right now. But 240 is, we got a break-even point for you. You need to have that many homes being sold. And I'll get back to this point more as I go through the presentation. But equally important for Marama Mac, your apartment occupancy rate stays below 95%. There's a huge, huge difference between the demographic dynamics of single-family attached homes and apartments. And again, I'll get on to that more later, but those are the two assumptions of the housing market. Unemployment rate, 6%. Well, this is violated already. You're about, about 10, 10 to 12, depending on what measure it's going to be. And the question here is, how long is that going to last? Yeah, again, some economists think that we'll be back below 9% by the first quarter next year. I'm skeptical on that myself. So, next slide, please. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay. Your transfer rates remain the same. You don't have a building moratorium. Number 14 is a very important one. The state of New York does not change current laws on inter-district transfers, vouchers, or charter schools. In other states, they have made changes in these laws, and it's had a devastating impact on, on school enrollment. We hold this constant because I have absolutely no idea what the New York State legislature is going to be doing in 2022. So we're just holding it constant. No new charters open in the surrounding area. 17, no distressed sales. We start seeing people get behind on their mortgages. Distress sales does not exceed 20% a given year. Housing turnover rate remains at current level. Majority of home sales are over age of 60, number 18. This is a very, very key point. Okay, despite the anecdotal thoughts on this, most people don't downsize till they're in their 70s. You'll see a slight uptick at 62, another one at 65. Most people don't downsize their homes till their 70s. Only about 10% of people will sell their homes and move south. About 10% to 12% will go to assisted living. Most people who downsize don't move more than 50 miles from their home. Okay? These downsizing homeowners is the backbone of the existing housing market. Where they're located and what's the age structure of those home sellers. People say, well, why are you always looking at over 70 population mortality rates? I said, that's because it drives your housing market. All right? And where they're distributed. So, and that's, I'll get back to that point again later, too. That's been a major change during the COVID period here. Private school remains the same, and your first property doesn't get foreclosed. Okay? Next slide, please. All right, this is a population pyramid, though it looks like nothing like a pyramid. Two points here, the number one predictive variable for both population enrollment change, not fertility, not even migration, is age structure. Where is your population distributed across the life course? Okay? It dictates who's having kids, who's empty nesting, who's moving out, who's moving in. And also for this, your demographic fingerprint, because no two geographic areas have the exact same size and shape of the population pyramid. And it tells you a lot about where your population's going and how it's going to change over the next 10 years. But a side point on this, you'll notice on the top it says 2010 data. And the first thing I always hear from people is, oh my God, that's 10-year-old data. How could that possibly be good? Well, A, it's the best, most inclusive, and goes to the lowest geographic area that we've got in data. And this whole process is a lot like balancing your checkbook. Okay? You've got to have an opening balance, the add and subtract things, too. And if you don't have an opening balance, it's accurate. You just have the error go all the way through your, your balancing thing. Things in demographics, the 2010 census is still the best base for specifically smaller, your forecast, because it's the most complete and the most accurate. We vet the data for every district we see to make sure that it is accurate. That's why we do our field research. So as long as you've got a solid base and, and other data that's been estimated, you know, since then, has intrinsic errors in it. So we use administrative records and population models to bring it forward. We'd like to do the 2020 census when it comes out, but right now it's a mess. We don't know where we're going to get it. So we'll be using 2010 as a base, probably for the next two or three years until we can properly vet the 2020 data. We do not use, I think I mentioned in the report, we do not use ACS data, American Community Survey, because it's just fraught with errors. Anyway. But with the pot pyramid, you bring everything forward 10 years for aging. Zero to four, that's your preschoolers. Five to nine is your elementary, 10 to 14 is your middle school, 15, 19 is high school ages. 20 to 34, those three bars there, so we refer to demography as family formation ages. 80% of all births occur to women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old. I'm seeing a note here, but never mind. You can have a total fertility rate of nine. If you don't have women in prime childbearing age, you just not have that many births. The reason for that is because the majority of housing units in the school district are owner-occupied. You don't come out of college and buy a house. You come out of college, you rent an apartment. Start your family, get married, or get married, start your family. And when the first talk gets about first grade, you think, I need some space, want some land in the suburbs, and you move out to, to a single-family attached home. 35 to 54 are the ages where most people have kids in school. There are exceptions to that. I was one. I was a first-time father at 40. So when my son graduated high school, it's 58, and everybody told me what a nice, well-behaved grandson I had. But basically, when people come to your board meetings, they're going to be between the ages of 35 and 54 years old. Okay? 55 to 69, we'll call the empty nest households. These are people who have lived in the house 15, 20, 25, 30 years, had kids in school, graduated, go away. Marama Mac, your, your district's post-secondary participation rates above 80%, they're all going off to college. Okay? And this is where it gets a little confusing to people, anecdotally. The Smith family that's living down the house in the street 20 years. But 10 years ago, there was four people living in that household. Today, there's only two, because the kids grew up and moved away. So when you're looking at your population dynamics, what's the pace and magnitude of households' empty nesting in the area? Because they may still be the same occupants, but they have fewer, no kids left in there. And, and you can see here, it's a growing population, believe it or the last 10 years. 70 and over, that's what we call the turnover. And again, as I mentioned earlier, retirement's not the main trigger for downsizing. It's either the death of one of the spouses, or both lose the ability to drive, then have trouble with home upkeep, things like that, can't, can't get to where you need to go. They'll tend to downsize something smaller, less work, easier to get in, out of, closer to public transportation. Okay? Now, there's one thing I want to point out, and this is very, very common suburban areas, see this hourglass-type figure. Notice how the zero to four bar is smaller than the five to nine. Okay? Refer to this as the deficit. Reason why there's a deficit is because you have relatively few people in prime childbearing age. You don't have, and your fertility rate, which is low, but far below replacement level, is not high enough to produce enough kids. So theoretically, if no one moved in or out of the district for five years going forward to 2015, your elementary enrollment should have dropped by about 700 kids, because the cohorts coming in behind it were 700 smaller. Okay? Now, of course, it didn't, because you had in-migration. And that's how we can start measuring and build age-specific migration models per area. Here's what you should have done. Here's what you did do. We can correlate that to housing turnover, age structure, housing tenure, and all the variables that we use, and measure, all right, what's, what's been the in-migration? And you can then generalize that to the population, because it's been my experience over the years, when a third grader moves, they tend to take the whole family with them. Not always, but in most cases they do. But this is also a key point that people forget about. When they see a new household move in, they instinctively want to add it to the enrollment they already have, not realizing the cohorts coming in behind it, aging into the district, are smaller. So as these new households move in, they, they're bringing preschool-aged kids with them and building out those, those zero to four bars. In this case, it's kids born between 2006 and 2010. Now, it's, and then if you looked at the shape of the pyramid now, the main difference would be that large bubble in the early 40s are now in the early 50s. And that, that wave of elder households that were in their late 50s and now in their late 60s. But you still have that deficit in the zero to four. You just don't have enough births in the district to maintain enrollment. The district's resident fertility rate is not high enough to maintain enrollment at current levels. So you need in-migration, again, several hundred per year, just to break even. So if you can see, while we've had 400 households move in the last year, why is our enrollment flat? Well, that's one of the big reasons right there. Now, you'll notice, as we go through the next four slides, I have one for each one of the four elementary areas. Some are similar to the district, none are exactly the same. And you see individual characteristics of each attendance area in the population pyramid. So if you want to go to the next one, about your central, okay? Has that 20 to 24 deficit, and then a zero to four deficit, but not as radical as the district is. A much older population also there, too. If you go to the next one, here you have Chatsworth, where you have a, a much more, makes closer to the district average, actually. But you have, again, that deficit, 20 to 34 years old, and then you see it zero to four. The next one, this is real outlier, is Marama Mac. Okay, and Marama Mac Avenue Elementary Attendance Area is, and you'll see this in the other days we go through the slides, radically different than the other three areas. Okay? And the big difference is, this is where the concentration of renter-occupied households are at. Okay? Owners and renters have two different dynamics. Owners tend to be older, because they're older, they're wealthier, and they're homeowners. They tended to have, have completed their family formation. Not many kids or households go out and drop $800,000 on a new house and say, hey, I have another kid. They're done at that point. And they move an average of 14 years. Renters, younger, tend to be poor, still in family formation. If they move in, they still may have some kids, those apartments. And they move an average of 18 months. So it's a much more mobile population. So you see two different dynamics. And you'll also see here, because they have a large number of people, and they're from 20 to 34 years old, a relatively small zero to four deficit, because you have a large number of people in prime childbearing age. But because the fertility rate is so low, you still have a deficit below replacement level. And then last, but certainly not least, you have Murray Avenue, where there's virtually almost no apartments. So there's almost nobody 20, 34 years old. And that's dependent upon people turning over. Now, you'll notice at the other end of the spectrum, 65, 69, and 60, 64, and even 55, 59, bring those forward 10 years, and you can see there is a lot of people in this area, a lot of homeowners who are aging into the turnover ages. So now, and going into the future, you're going to have an increasing number of households downsizing, putting their homes on the market, once we get past the COVID era, because that's, that's going to change right now. But you can see where each area has its own kind of unique demographic characteristics. Next slide. Going into that point, this is a couple of household characteristics. And the key one here is households with population under 18. That includes preschoolers. You'll notice it's 37.8, just over a third. Okay? That's why it's so hard to get bonds passed for school districts now. It's about national average, too. You're outnumbered two to one. There's not a school district in this country where households with school-aged kids make up a majority. Last one was in Utah about 15 years ago. All right? Persons per household, a real, real crude measurement here. I don't go too far on it, but mom, dad, whoever the point is, is kids. So you can see where, you know, your difference get two, 2.71 in two areas, 284, Chatsworth, and then Central's got 236. It doesn't sound like a lot of difference, you know, 236 to 284, it's basically .5. But when you multiply that by 2,000 households, rather substantial difference, since most of that changes under 18 populations. Next slide. Householders, 35, 54, these are the households, people with kids in school, 43% the district average, and that, that's been dropping the last, best 10 years. The good news, householders over the age of 65, these are the ones that will be turning over in the next 10 years, 25% and increasing. Okay? So you're going to have a potential of a large number of empty nest households, where you probably haven't seen children come out of those housing units for maybe 10, 15, 20 years. All of a sudden, you now start seeing kids coming out and to start turning over. But the percent homeowner, you know, the district is 68%, but look at the wide range of difference between the attendance area. Murray at almost 90, Central and Chatsworth at 70, Marama Mac at 46. That's why you see those rapidly different age distributions, because of the housing tenure. Again, this is a variable that most people don't look at, and look at in areas of population. So, you know, so the demographic dynamics of Murray Avenue is radically different from Marama Mac, the way the batteries are drawn right now, because of the way the housing tenure is distributed. Next slide. Single-person households. About a quarter of them, but again, it ranges from 33 in Central down to 21 in Chatsworth and Murray. Okay? But the percent single over 65, these are the ones who be turning over in short order, because they're already down to one person. Again, very high, and also the highest Central, very low in Chatsworth. You know, again, see, these are kind of unique characteristics to look at. And you correlate these variables with, again, Ministry of Records data, home sales, housing type, home prices, the tenure, student yields, things like that. And you can correlate how you've changed over the last 10 years with how your demographic variables are distributed. Next slide. Okay, this is my favorite data from 2010. All right? This is the individual year of age by elementary area. Now, in 2010, the five-year-olds are kindergarten, six are first grade, seven is second grade, so forth. But by 2015, the under one- But by two thousand and fifteen, the under ones are now five years old. That's your kindergarten. One-year-olds are first grade, two are second, three are third, everybody's aged five years. And we can compare the actual census count by age with what your enrollment has done. And we'll do that in an example in the next slide. But what I just want to point out here is, that's why we don't use year to year changes. One year does not a trend to make. Sometimes the district will say, wow, we're having a large number of kindergarteners this year or a small number of first graders and they want to correlate it to some trend. My first thought is maybe it's a bigger or small cohort, you know. And a great example here, look at Mamaroneck Avenue. The two-year-old cohort, which is twelve years old right now, hundred and eight, drops to ninety-five, then pops up to a hundred and twenty-four. Just have a deficit one year and a surplus the next. So it's how these cohorts are sized and distributed. Or again, Mamaroneck Avenue, the seven-year-olds are a hundred and seventeen, six-years-old are a hundred and forty-seven, goes up thirty, then drops thirty-six the next year to a hundred and eleven. So we can be able to look at these cohort sizes and see, is this increase or decline based on a bigger or small cohort going through? Or is there some other demographic factor we need to be looking at? Or administrative factors for that matter. And we calculate something called a market share. And we have the example in the next slide, the district level. Okay. We take the actual enrollment, okay, and at the bottom is two thousand and fourteen. That one in red, the four forty-nine, that's your first grade enrollment. The two-year-olds in two thousand and ten are now six years old by two thousand and fourteen. Okay. And we calculated a percentage. So your enrollment of four forty-nine is a hundred and fourteen percent of that three ninety-three counted for that cohort in the census base. And then the next year, two thousand and fifteen, go up as four sixty-four. Then sixteen, it's four seventy-six, four seventy-nine, four seventy-six. And we look at those percentages. If the percentages go up, it's in migration. If they go down, it's out migration. And this is how we could measure how much in and out migration has come out of this. That's why it's so important to look at which transfer numbers are. Because we want to make sure that we're picking up demographic change due to in or out migration and not due to transfers or changes in ministry of policy, things like that. At the district level, it's a little more solid. But you'll notice that those percentages, most of them go up as you go through the last six years, which measures the in migration rate. Okay. Next slide. Okay, this is the, there's one of these for each one of the attendances. This is the district total population forecast. Both fertility, the mortality, migration model, things, all those. There's two ways to read this. You could look at one age group through time, like five to nine, which is roughly your elementary enrollment. Goes from two hundred, two thousand, two ninety-nine, two thirty in two thousand and fifteen, two, three forty in two thousand and twenty. And you just follow how, that's how your elementary enrollment is going to change over the next ten years or fifteen years, twenty years. Or you can follow a cohort through time. The zero to four in two thousand and ten are now five to nine in fifteen, they're ten to fourteen in two thousand and twenty. They're fifteen to nineteen in two thousand and twenty-five, then twenty to twenty-four in two thousand and thirty. Across the bottom, you have median age at forty point seven. That's population half older than half or younger. You'll notice it goes up slightly. Most school districts in the country right now are seeing rather dramatic increase in median age due to the aging baby boom. You're not seeing that dramatic because you are seeing some turnover of older households moving out and being replaced by younger households with kids. That tends to slow down that aging process. Your biggest in migration flows are people roughly, say, thirty-three to forty-five years old, bringing zero to nine-year-olds with them. Okay. Your biggest out migration flows, not surprisingly, is the over seventy population and the eighteen to twenty-two as they're going off to college. College kids are kind of where they go to school, not where they're from. That's why you see that consistent big drop from fifteen, nineteen to twenty, twenty-four. That's your college kids going off to college. Births, the four, five in the bottom are, how many, the components have changed for each five-year period. You'll notice the birth thirteen, ten, go to twelve, eighty, twelve, eighty, eleven, ten. That's a consistent drop, not because of a drop in the fertility rate, but a drop in the number of women in prime childbearing age. The deaths, you know, tend to go up. This is again, pre-COVID. Again, that's not necessarily due to a disease or anything. It's due to an aging population. You just have more people referred to as prime dying age. I know we've got to find a better term than that demography, but that's what we're using. I used to say it was anybody over sixty, but now that I'm sixty-four, it's anybody over the age of eighty. Net migration, and this might confuse people with this five hundred and twenty. You know, God, we have much more people moving in than that. Well, that's true. That's the number of people moving in, minus the number of people moving out. So your actual in migration is probably about twenty-five hundred, but you got two thousand out migration at the same time. So the net impact is a positive six twenty. And then roughly it's changed. So the results of this population forecast for each one of the attendance areas drives the enrollment forecast, which is the next one. So given all these population models, the district as a whole, slight increase. And, but there's one more dynamic I need to cover here. And the analogy I use is a bucket of water. If I have a bucket of water, and I'm pouring water in the top, and there's a hole in the bottom, as long as I'm pouring in faster than it's going out, the bottom level will rise. But if for some reason, the hole in the bottom gets bigger and it's pouring out faster than I'm pouring in, level will drop. Even if I'm pouring at the same rate. Enrollment works the same way. What's the size of the cohorts coming in versus what are the size of the cohorts graduating out in twelfth grade? And from Mamaroneck, your break even point is if your twelfth grade classes are below four hundred, you're going to have enough immigration to show some slight growth. But the years where you have relatively large high school classes, and the one that stands out to me is two thousand and twenty-five. We have four hundred and fifty-five students graduate this year. If you go back through time, that's your traditionally large cohort right now. That's the one you do see it drop. Well, the next year, two thousand and twenty-six, you've got three hundred and ninety-six seniors. That's fifty, over fifty fewer. So you kind of pop back up because there's relatively few number of kids graduating out. So I see a lot of year to year variation on that, basically what the cohort sizes are. But given the assumption we used in March, you should see relatively modest growth. Now, most of it's middle school and high school, you have large cohorts going through. The elementary pretty well stays flat from about twenty-six hundred and fifty all the way across. Now, case in none, a lot of people say, wow, our enrollment's staying the same. We have no issues. Well, that's at the district level. Okay. The distribution of those twenty-six hundred kids throughout the district can and usually are changing dramatically. You may have one area increasing, one decreasing. The net effect is staying, staying common. So even though you're seeing a relatively stable enrollment for elementary, it doesn't mean that your distribution within the district is staying the same. So middle school and high school, as well as cohort age through, you're going to see some increases. Last slide, I want to go over in the presentation, the great question, well, how'd we do? Well, like every place else, we've done, oh geez, at least a hundred and fifty evals so far this year. We were high. Okay. But we're seeing some trends emerge across the country. Mamaroneck's no different. We're seeing shortages primarily in two grades, kindergarten and ninth grade. Okay. And for two different reasons. A lot of kindergarten is the one grade you don't have to go to. I mean, you got to be in first grade someplace. But we're seeing parents use other options for kindergarten, home, privates, things like that. The other thing we're seeing an increase on how much it's, well, probably quite a bit in Mamaroneck is what we call red shirting. Parents can opt to hold a kid back one year, particularly ones born late in the, in the school year where they would be usually be the youngest ones in the class. And that's usually traditionally, most years where parents will opt to do that. We're seeing much more of them do it this year, not just here, but all across the country. So if you do these evaluations for school districts, we're seeing everybody's kindergarten numbers are much, much lower than they would have been or should have been with forecast. The other one is ninth grade, because most school districts, you're no exception, see kids come out of private school in eighth grade and go to the public high school. They're just not coming this year. So, but both of these trends, we believe, are short-term phenomenon. Twenty-one, maybe twenty-two, that should be all over. The parents that red shirred their kids in kindergarten will probably show up in your two thousand and twenty-two first grade. So these are abnormal dips and rises that you don't want to generalize through the rest of the forecast series. I think if the economy drag keeps dragging on recession for a little longer, we'll see a lot of those private school kids coming back because they can't afford the tuition. In fact, we're seeing that in some schools already, ones that started in private in September already starting to see come back in the publics here in October. And particularly the Midwest. So again, we do evaluations, all of our forecasts, the first three years. I'll get back with Robert next September when you get your fall AVM numbers and we'll do another evaluation, see how we're shaping up at that point. Did it thirty-two minutes, Robert?
Thank you.
Not bad for me.
Thank you for that thorough summary, and I appreciate it. And the report that will, that is certainly available to the public, has more detail breaking things down by our elementary schools. I know that you pointed out, Jerry, that based on the forecast, that the middle school and high school should continue to grow if the forecasts play out for the next few years. And then we can talk about individual elementary schools and changes there. At this point, I certainly wanted to turn to the board to see if there are any specific questions about the highlights. And I'll turn to you, Rena, to manage that process. You're muted.
Thanks, Bob. So does anybody on the board have any questions regarding the report?
I just have one quick question, Rena, real quick. Dr. McGivern, thank you, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. Very well done, very well, very well displayed. So we appreciate that. Question regarding new homes being sold, or homes being sold. But one of the things that we're seeing as a trend here, and I'm sure throughout the country as well, is homes that are smaller being torn down and bigger houses being built, which could contribute to possibly larger families moving in initially. Any thoughts on that or anything? Any, and that's probably a hard data point to collect, but just out of curiosity, because it's definitely a trend we're seeing here.
Oh, actually, that probably represents a large proportion of your new home construction. Very, very common in the Northeast where land costs are very high. They built particularly big homes on half acre plus lots, tear them down, put two on there, things like that. Or even more common, three or four in a block, tear them down, you know, lose three, gain ten, you know.
Right. Okay.
And that's, that's, that's true. And that's definitely going to go on, particularly with the cost on that. Because, you know, again, most, most of these kids coming out, of course, kids now to me is anybody in the age of forty. Just can't afford to pay that kind of money for a house. And, but having said that, it goes back to, you know, you may see ten, fifteen, twenty new houses built a year, no doubt. That's against the two hundred and forty, three hundred, three hundred and fifty existing homes being sold. So in the whole scheme of things, wow, that's about ten percent of your housing market, right about national averages. And there's one point I didn't make in the thing too. It's it's the housing market itself right now. You would, if you're looking at it anecdotally, and you would swear that it's this white hot housing market out there right now. Anything new being built, bought, sold, existing home going to market, it's sold in a week. They get full price, if not more. You know, I'm sure everybody's seen things with that going, it's going on all over the country. If you've got the economic resources, that's a big F. If you've got the economic resources, you're jumping on sub-three percent thirty-year fixed rates, no problem. So, wow, this everybody's moving. Well, they're selling. The problem is, now I looked up your numbers again today, the elderly just aren't moving. Talk to any Realtor in your area, and I'm sure they'll back this up. The supply of existing homes in the market right now is probably at an all-time low because the people are not downsizing. They're, I'm staying put, I'm supposed to be hunkering in place. Where are they going to go? They're not going to move to New York City. You know, they can't move south. You know, there's not enough assisted living areas, there's not enough elder housing, things like that. They're staying put. Okay. Now, hopefully that will change in the next two years or so, and you'll start seeing more and more supply come on the market. Looked at both Mamaroneck and Largemont today. Over the last three years, the two areas combined had about seventeen hundred existing homes sold in the last three years. Today, there's a hundred and seventy on the market, you know. So using an example here, you know, if you're selling fifty homes in an area during a season, you know, they sell them like a week, well, that's already great. But if you normally sell a hundred and fifty during that period, that's a hundred and fifty fewer moving in. And I know I shared this one with Bob in our conversation. It's a great example. New York City, Joe Sawa, who's the demographer down there, keeps track of all these numbers. Manhattan alone, thirteen thousand vacant apartments in Manhattan, all-time record, and never been that high before. Because everybody's rushing to the suburbs, right? Which is true. But as a demographer, I look at that, well, they've moved the suburbs for eighty years around there. You know, that's for both the first lovey towns out in Long Island. Thirteen thousand vacancies tells me no one's moving in. If the young people aren't moving into the city in these apartments and starting their families, getting married and all that, they're not there five, ten years down the road to move to the suburbs. So it's a long-term macro decline. And it's not just New York City. It's Chicago, it's LA, it's Atlanta, Baltimore, DC. No one's moving into the city. I mean, who in their right mind would move into a large urban area right now? You know. You've seen people that were telling us a year ago that the millennials are enamored with urban living and we're just going to never go to the suburbs. And now it's changed their tune going, everybody's going to flock to the suburbs. And it's just, it's the same nonsense. So it's still going to be a flow there. You're still going to have, the big problem from Mamaroneck is getting those empty nesters downsized and move out. Because if they don't move, you know, that's not, you don't have houses for sale and they can't have young families move in. That's probably the key point taken away from this. And you can track that daily on Zillow and Realty Track. You know, how's it going? And two forty to three hundred is about your break even, but you need that just to break even.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have a question about some of the, one of the assumptions in terms of empty nesters moving out. So do the assumptions hold true for high tax areas? Is it the same assumption that people don't leave until they hit their seventies? When they're empty nesters?
Yeah, they stay put. Most people don't, don't move. You know, they don't leave the area. They like, you know, here, here people will go down to Florida. That was the big, we use Internal Revenue Service migration data, county to county flows. You know, high tax, low tax was a big thing when they, they got rid of the, where they capped the tax deduction, ten thousand dollars came out, that was a big thing. Didn't even budget, still, you know, still the same. The problem with that is if you, well, I'm going to leave high tax New York and go to low tax South Carolina. The problem with that is if, if you, well, I'm going to leave high-tax New York and go to low-tax South Carolina. You know, the problem with that is you have to live in South Carolina. You know, and having gone from high-tax Massachusetts to low-tax South Carolina, that's probably why I wound up spending tens of thousands of dollars sending my son to private school, you know? It's not just all Myrtle Beach and things like that, you know, it's just, you get what you pay for on taxes, I find, to a certain extent. Culture is different. Some people like the warm sunshine. Interestingly, we're seeing a flow too, people that do go to Florida, and they'll go down and one of the spouses dies. The surviving spouse usually moves back up to the area they come from. We're seeing a pretty heavy up migration flow from Florida of people 75-plus moving back up to the Northeast. So it's, but you always hear about people that, you know, oh, I'm going to retire, go to Florida, Arizona, or Ozarks, or some, someplace like that. Trust me, you're going to be welcomed down here anyway, first things like Yankee refugees and things like that, but. Only move within 50 miles.
No, I just want to, one of the things we talked about is that, given the uncertainty, the near-term uncertainty in terms of pandemic and all the trends that you acknowledged. I think you, you mentioned, and how do you make decisions or what decisions do you make? Or how do you plan accordingly? And I think what stood out in this report, and I said to you, is that though the near-term trend or forecast is that we're going to grow, it's safe to say that use caution when you think about how you plan in the near term.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I would also be very, very mindful of the redistribution of your particularly elementary-age students in the district. And you will, you will have that data before anybody else, you know? I'll go back to a point I made in, in a presentation on elementary enrollment. To the, to the layman looking at this report, and it looks like, oh, there's almost virtually no change in elementary enrollment over the next 10 years. Stays within like 100 of each other, that's not a lot of change for this, your size. Wouldn't have to do anything. Well, if you look at the individual schools, some are going up, some are going down, some are staying the same. So your distribution of students is going to be, that's just number of students, didn't even look at characteristics, race, ethnic, socioeconomic, special needs, anything like that. You know, more administrative issues on that. So there's, there's more variation within, within the areas than you see at the district total.
I had a question, Omar, that Macavine, if you can help me to understand. So last year, there were a lot of people concerned about few developments, there were in Largemont and Marama. That discussion, like, are you going to be over enrollment, and people were concerned about it. So after I listened to your presentation, that you say that we need migration by the hundreds in order to sustain that enrollment. So do you think this good, like a more developments that comes to our area?
Well, if if you see, let's say, 200 households move into existing homes during a two, or one or two-year period, and then you build 200 more and they come in, well, that's going to, of course, greatly increase your, your immigration rate. But if you have situations like you have right now, where you're, you're not seeing housing turnover to level of 200, it's like 100, it's not going to have that much of an impact. And again, it kind of goes back to what, what Bob was saying, is the fact that, don't, don't make a hasty decision based on really, really short, unique trends like we're seeing right now during COVID. They said, well, we're, we're not seeing your houses turn over, they're staying put, our enrollment will start to drop because we don't have in-migration, we should build these homes, you know? Whereas it goes to homes or apartments, they get two different dynamics in there too. With the same discussion Belmont, Massachusetts last week, you know, that do they approve apartments, you know, that was going to bring in households, things like that. And in their case, they clearly weren't going to be able to sell their homes because they didn't have as many people over 65 as you have. So they decided to go ahead and, and they kind of split the difference and improved half of it, you know? And said, we'll come back and ask us in three years, we'll see how things are shaking out. It's, it's not a good time to make really radical, long-term decisions, you're going to have to live with for 10 years. Apartment and home building are ones like that. But again, it also depends how many homes, what type, what price, depends on what kind of household you're going to draw to it. So it really depends on the specific situation. And also for your district, where is it going to be?
Correct. So, so that was the one thing I can say is the variability and the granularity of how things play out really has a direct impact, as you, as you indicated. I, I remember back several years when we had a large incoming cohort at Chatsworth and had some multi-housing developments come online, and that was a tipping point relative to that particular year. So, so I, I think that is the sensitivity relative to, to change that could be felt immediately, but not over time.
Right. Like Marama Avenue would be the last place you'd want to put more rental housing, because that's where most of it is right now anyway. You know, your districts really aren't mindful of this, they should be when they draw attendance lines, is you don't want an attendance area dominated by one housing type. If you get one drop where it's more like a pillar, you know, it's, in fact, what's the one closest to that? Central is probably the one closest to that nice even distribution. But you don't want them all full of apartments because you're going to get full and stay there, you don't want the real severe hourglass shape like Murray Avenue, because you're going to get dramatic waves in your enrollment as, as people move in with kids and age in place, it drops back down and takes about 20 years to come back up again. So you, you want a good demographic balance. So if you're trying to approve, where are you going to put like single-family attached homes, or, and this is large numbers too, if it's, if it's tear down three, build 10, that, that's kind of rounding here. I'm talking like a big multifamily apartment complex of like 300 units or something. You want to be real mindful of what the demographic composition of that area you're putting it in, or change your boundaries, one of the two. And let me, I've worked on about 500 redistributing projects in my career. When I started, all my hair was dark, you know, it's it's, it's fun to do those.
Well, Dr. Shapps had a full head of hair when he began. Anybody else on the board have any questions? And then Dr. McGivern, I'm just going to ask, because I'm trying to gauge what community questions might be. I know we have LAN associates who are also going to present. Would, Bob, is it okay with you if we push questions to after LAN's presentation, if Dr. McGivern can stick around? If you can't, then we'll, we'll shift to community questions just on the demographic report now.
I've, I've got North Dakota here in about half an hour or so. Or, or, you know, Bob can just send them to me, you know, it's a, he's got no trouble sending questions to me, he's been doing it for six months now, so.
Well, why don't we just check really quickly with the community and take about, why don't we say, take about, you know, 10 minutes here for any community questions on the demographic study, and then after that, we'll swap, we'll switch to LAN and Dr. Shapps will send any other questions to you. Email. Debbie, do, are there any questions for Dr. McGivern?
Not yet, Rena.
That's what I like to hear. What a nice crowd.
Well, that, yeah.
There was a, I think Amy asked a question.
We do have, Amy just raised her hand.
Okay.
So I'm going to allow Amy to speak. You there, Amy?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yep.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a quick question about the 2020 census. When would this data be available? And if it's worth the while to look at it when it comes out, will it give a different result, or do you think typically demographics doesn't change that much between these 10 years? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Under, in normal times, I would say absolutely, yes, use 2020 census, it'd be worth looking at. In fact, we had been telling school districts right until earlier this year, wait till the 2020 comes out, it would have been how with that time was scheduled to have, the data we use would come out in March of next year. Much better base, show with differences, it's always better to have the most recent census in there, okay? That was then, this is now, okay? Now granted, and this is my fourth census I've been working on, it's always been politicized, but never to the level of this year. It's just an absolute disaster. They've already pushed back the, the push-out dates. Now they're saying September of '21 for the, what we used to call the SF file, the standard file we use for school districts. We're not sure about that. We always vet the data anyway, we don't know what we're going to get. There's something called differential privacy, where they want to infuse error for privacy concerns. It's, I'll just be honest with you, it's an absolute mess. And at this juncture, I cannot recommend a school district using the 2020 census until we, the demographic community, and I assure you, there's literally thousands of us out there waiting to do this, can vet and check this data. We have the Applied Conference coming up in February. It's going to be virtual, and that's one of the major topics, is how we're going to, we're going to evaluate and see how good this census data is. Right now, every indication we have, it will not be good enough to use. In fact, and this is my own personal opinion, since you're recording this, I will make sure to say this. But there are many of us in the demographic community that believe that Joe Biden wins next month's election, they will toss the 2020 and try to do it again in '22. It's that bad. It is that bad. We haven't had census this bad in 100 years. But it has just, they've been trying to not include people, not include undocumented aliens, and then the problem, people don't think about college students are counted where they go to school, not where they're from. Well, the colleges all shut down in March before Election Day, and all the kids went home. So all these college towns, I was just talking with my, my friends up at Genesee and Syracuse, that college population is normally counted in their area, and they get money for them from the feds and representation, all that, weren't there to be counted. So even in the general population, the response rate's only 85%. For off-campus college students, it's about 10%, you know, that's just, it's issues like that all over the country, different segments of the population, that, you know, we just don't have confidence in it. So again, these are not normal times. So if it was any other census, I would have said, yeah, definitely, let's take a look at it. Probably in the fall of '21, we'll have the data vetted, we compare it to your enrollment, far, far better to do that. But until, wow, and goodbye to that one. McGivern's first law of statistics, all statistics are guilty until proven innocent. Until it passes my muster, I don't use it, okay? It's going to be a while before 2020 passes muster. It may be as long as '23. But when it does come on, if it's good data, absolutely, definitely use it. And we will tell you some more in-depth information.
Well, Dr. McGivern, it doesn't look like we have any more questions from the board or the community. I want to thank you for the presentation. I cannot guarantee that there will not be follow-up questions as we look at this, this data and think more about your presentation. So those might be coming, and send our best to North Dakota.
Oh, absolutely. They've got their own problems up there, so.
Jerry, thank you very much. We appreciate it. We, we appreciate it, and all the best, and thank you for the report, and we'll continue the conversations.
Okay, Bob, I'm sure we'll be in touch. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Okay, I now want to turn it over to LAN Associates and Sylvia to present on the update on the capital plans. I believe that Danielle is with us. Yep.
Yes.
And Mike McGovern.
Oh, and, oh, okay, sorry, Mike.
No, that's fine. I usually get left out, but that's okay.
There's always a first time.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I hope that everyone is healthy and doing well. It's hard to believe that it's been since January since we have made our last update to you. And a lot has obviously happened since then. This evening, I just want to take an opportunity to give you a quick update of where we stand with our Brawn projects in terms of submission to the State Education Department, projects we've received approvals on, and construction that we have begun. So our Phase 1 projects, we have received approvals on the transportation garage renovations, the Chatsworth Avenue addition and renovations, the Marama Ave School addition and renovations, the Murray Ave addition and renovations, the Murray Ave electrical upgrades, and the high school fire alarm replacement. As you can see, some of these dates are in August and September, which did not allow for summer construction. However, we were able to begin construction on the Murray Ave Electrical Upgrade Project. That was bid in May, and construction began in June, and they were, been working on it throughout the summer. And it will be completed in the new year prior to next summer's round of construction. In addition, the high school fire alarm project was approved, and we bid that also in May. And we were able to take advantage of May and then the entire summer to work on that project. And now they are still working on the project, and they're working after hours. And that will also be completed in the new year prior to the beginning of the summer construction. Our Phase 2 projects, which include the high school renovations, that's the Culinary Arts Lab, the STEAM Lab, and multiple capital improvement projects such as roofing, chillers, boilers, that is going to be, we're expecting to submit that at the end of December of this year. Also, we are going to be submitting the Homics Middle School renovations and the Central School renovations, and that will complete all of the submissions that we have to make to the state. This is an update on the high school STEAM Lab. Since we last spoke and gave a update, we hadn't fully identified what the Pathfinder project was going to be. And that has been selected at the high school, and it is going to be a state-of-the-art STEAM Lab, where we will have prototyping studio, woodworking shops, metal shops, a large design studio, and small huddle stations. This is located in the third floor of the post, that is the current Apple program. And for those of you who can remember back, it used to be the cafeteria of the Post Road Building. These images are just to give you a taste of some of the inspiration images that we've been using. We're actually currently designing this with the collab team at the district and getting daily feedback from them about what the different things that are going to be going on in these spaces and the aesthetic that they would like to have in there. So these are some, some inspiration photos. You can see there's areas where they will do prototyping. This is an idea of the large design area with all of the other areas that open up into the large design area. We're going to have as many writable surfaces, so there's collaboration with students. This is a project that LAN just completed in New Jersey, which is very similar, it's their collab there. And that's these images down here, and this is their prototyping studio. These are some more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Danielle, can I just interject? I just wanted to take the opportunity, and I appreciate just to acknowledge the MHS STEM teachers, Dr. Jadev, Gwen Benton Court, Jim Love, Rob Hohn, who really have been, as Danielle suggested. Rob Hohn, who really have been, as Danielle suggested, in conversation with designing this space. We've had a significant increase in interest in STEM-related areas, and had the opportunity, working with Lan Associates, to visit Scarsdale D-Lab, learn from that construction project in terms of, of what really played out relative to a kind of real thought about how space could be improved, and certainly took advantage of that as well, as you mentioned, many of your projects in the tri-state area, building similar projects, trying to get the best of all of that, and then take that to our vision. And so it's been an exciting process, and certainly look forward to where we end up around this space. So thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Yes, your, your, your teachers, the STEAM teachers have, have been very helpful, and we're very excited, because we're to the point where now, now all the fun part is, is happening, and we're, and we're really designing a space that we think that will be useful for the, the entire district, actually. So in these, in this photo that you're seeing here are ideas of small little huddle, huddle rooms, where small groups of students get together and work out problems. In our particular design, the huddle stations also open up to the large design studio for visibility, but also we can open that up, and they can have large presentations in there. So we are actually right now working on a rendering of the actual space, so we'll be very excited to share that at a future update with the board. The next space I wanted to give you an update on is the High School Culinary Arts Lab. The Culinary Arts Lab is going to be in the Palmer side of the building, on the first floor that's currently Humanities', and this has been coming together very well, and we are actually probably about 90% done with, with this particular area. And it has really shaped into a, a great space that will help even grow your culinary arts program further. Currently, there are six different student, student kitchens that are all open, and can, you can view the teacher, who will be at the teacher demonstration kitchen. And then we also have a classroom that can also double as a cafe off the side, that has windows that look through, and also there, there are actually doors, and they open up, and you can see into the Culinary Arts Lab. So that will give you the opportunity to have a small cafe, but then also it will be used as a classroom. Everything in here is commercial kitchen grade, so they're going to be learning on the same equipment that they are going to be using when they go out in the field, into the culinary field. So this is definitely going to be a state-of-the-art kitchen. This is a working rendering that we're working on right now. It's a massing model, so no, the walls will not all be green. We haven't applied the finishes to them yet and the colors, but what you can see is the stainless steel hoods that will be over each of the kitchen islands, and you can really get a sense of the space. There's TVs at the end of each of the, of the, of the kitchens, so that they can see exactly what the teacher is demonstrating at the demonstration kitchen. And then you can see down in the, in the bottom, those are the open, those doors that open in our glass that you can see in, that could be used as a classroom or as a cafe.
And Danielle, if I can step in, I think it's, before we get to the next slide, I, I think the, the underlying thread for both the STEAM Lab and the Culinary Arts, that we've had conversations of building pathways that really go back into our middle school, and the idea was to really build and introduce foundational experiences through the UA program, and coordinate and connect that through students traveling into the high school, and then go deeper, and as you say, really apply their skills. We, we certainly had the opportunity to visit, I had the opportunity to visit area schools like New Canaan, where they had a vibrant program that provided to make connections between local restaurants and entrepreneurs, really making, bringing the community in, so to speak. But as, as much as that, providing the community service of having citizens come in to, to participate in terms of the cafe, and understand what students are actually doing. So a lot of creativity in thinking of the design part of this, but also the connections in terms of how this becomes a district pathway, and gives opportunities for a lot of students to explore. And when I think of Taryn Delaney, Betty Comerford, our Sustainability Initiative, this all really fits into a broader idea of both sustainability, entrepreneurship, and culinary arts. So thank you.
Yes, and to add to that, if, if you can see in the, in the bottom rendering, there's a door, and that actually, that door actually goes to the exterior. So there will be, we, we selected the location based on ease of, of potentially your other students within the district coming to this, this school, and not having to, to go all the way up to the, the third floor. Same thing for deliveries. If you're going to be making a lot of food here, there's going to be a large amount of deliveries, which is why we made it easy for deliveries, and there's also a walk-in cooler and freezer. So it really will be a, a functioning commercial kitchen. And here are some inspiration images that we have, and as we update that rendering that was on the last slide with finishes, we will of course share that. And the, the Culinary Arts Department has also been very integral in helping to select every piece of equipment that is within this design, and to really work with us on the design of what works best for them. So the Summer 2021 projects that we are going out to bid with in November will include the transportation garage, the Chatsworth Ave addition and renovations, and the Mamaronek Ave School addition and renovations. So those will all be our Summer 2021 construction. Summer 2022 is the Murray Ave addition and renovations, the high school renovations, Homics Middle School, and Central. And that is it. Unless there's any questions, I can open the floor for questions.
Uh, anybody on the board? Sam, not to put you on the spot, but being on the Building Committee, do you have any questions?
Oh, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like we made some great advancements on the designs, which is nice to see. So thank you for that. And I'm glad we're able to keep going on some of the priorities of the electrical and the high school alarm system, because those really were in dire need to get done ASAP. So it's good that those are going on now. So thank you for all of you putting that together and pushing it forward.
Just one question here, was, was there an opportunity to infuse materials, sustainable materials, or materials that speak to the use of recyclables and creation of any of these? I mean, they look beautiful, absolutely beautiful.
Yes, absolutely. In all of our designs, we, we attempt to use as many recycled materials as possible. Our company is made up of multiple lead designers, including myself. So we always have that, that's, that's our core, part of our core values. And none of the project, none of the projects that have started are sustainable projects, but the ones that you'll start to see construction on this summer do have sustainable materials incorporated, as well as sustainability in our systems when it comes to the mechanicals and the electrical for our energy usage and plumbing.
Is there, is there any sense on contractors, and given the climate and the, the heavy building going on all over, whether we're going to have a harder time drawing bids for what the work we have coming up, or is that a different category of construction?
Um, we have, we have found with, with some of the schools that they were able to, to do work this past summer. Some were not, because everything at the state level really went on halt, and they weren't approving projects in the same timeframe as they normally do, which is not always fast in the first place. But we are, that's why we're going out to bid so early, is so that we can take advantage of bidding it early, get, get to be some of the first projects that are, when, we know, when the contractors are hungry for their, their, their work, since there wasn't as much construction going on in schools last year, we do know that there are some, some people that are waiting for these projects to come out. So that's why we're planning on doing that early, and if we need to do a rebid, we would have time to do a rebid prior to the summer.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, Sam, that's a great question. You know, a lot of the school contractors are really hungry for work. There's not a lot out there. And I think we're going to be well positioned to get a project out there and get competitive bids back on this project. And, you know, usually that leads to projects being at or on budget. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic that, you know, as we move forward, we bid this project, we're, we're going to be able to pretty much get everything done without any, without any cost overruns, you know, on the, on the budget.
And is there any adjustments you think we'll need for supplies? I, I mean, you're saying it will probably come in on budget, so that's good, but I know material costs, on my end, everything's gone up. And so I didn't know if that's kind of, if it's dramatic enough for what we're doing, or it's still going to leave us in the ballpark.
I mean, there, there have been shortages on material, driving prices up, but I think, you know, as we were coming out of this first wave of the COVID, I think manufacturers starting to catch up. But I don't know what's going to happen in this resurgence, if, if it actually, you know, comes back full force. I don't know what kind of effect it will have on the pricing, so going to have to lay it by ear and see, see how it goes.
Right, we'll have to adjust if it, if it affects the bids dramatically, it might be something has to be put off, but that's good to hear. Thank you.
Um, one question that, that's actually goes beyond Mike and Danielle's area. It, it's really more for Bob, Sylvia, and Steve Brugge. You know, I know that some of these projects will result in other programs moving. For example, the ESP program. As part of this, are we going to also be identifying spaces to shift those programs?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we've already gone through the process of trying to work with the high school administration to understand how current programs in the spaces will, we will accommodate to meet the goals of those programs, and, and, and space needs as well. And, and in the case of this program, you know, I would say where it's located now supports the program design, and so we'll be very attentive to looking throughout the building for that as well. As far as the humanities section, really the challenge with culinary program is where it currently sits is really not conducive to, to the space that's required. And so where the humanities offices have been in somewhat underutilized, this is a perfect opportunity to enhance that area that is available space. So it will be a, a process of really taking the time to think through that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Okay, Mike, thank you. Danielle, thank you. Really appreciate all your work and your.
Rena, sorry, do you want to just ask, I don't know if anybody in the public has any comments or questions. Do you want to do that real quick before?
So far, no, Paul.
Okay.
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Actually, Amy just raised her hand.
I just saw one.
Yes, I will allow Amy. Amy, you there? Amy?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
One more question, it's more about the timeline. I know we, when the timeline was first set, it was pre-COVID, when we had the project split among like two years. Is there a reason why we still are not doing all the projects simultaneously, this coming around? And splitting them up over two years? Thank you.
I can, I'll take that one. The projects were originally over, over two years. The pandemic and slows, things that have slowed down at the, at the state level, has actually had us push out to, to a third year. But to do all of the projects in one year, that would be, that's just, it's, it's, it's too much to handle in one year for, on the district level, as well as ensuring that we would get good contractors. It really limits the pool of contractors that we can get that could do multiple large projects at one time. So that is why we have the Phase 1 and Phase 2. Summer construction schedule.
Mostly, mostly it was related to the logistics of actually doing the work while school was either going to be in session for part of the work or not. So conjunction and collaboration with working with the district and doing the construction, there's, there's a lot of things that affect, you know, the timing of projects when we go out to bid, when we do the work. So that had a, that played a large role in, in what we could do and how we scheduled the work.
Amy has her hand raised again, so. Go ahead, Amy.
Sorry, that'd be last question. I'll just follow up, just because I'm a civil engineer originally, so I just, I'm thinking more from a contractor's size. Is it better to have like a bigger project, and then they bid for it, so it's more appealing rather than like breaking up? Or are you bidding for the whole project with one contractor doing it over two years?
We were bidding it by school. So each, each school will have a general contractor and so on.
But I think Amy's, Amy's asking why, why not go for one contractor for the whole thing? Is there a cost saving? Trying to clarify why you break them up?
We've actually, we, we actually have discussed this, and there is, there is a possibility that we might put out an option for it to be a complete, to be a combined bid, but currently they went to the state separate. And then we can bid it both ways. So we've actually, we have actually spoke about that with Triton Construction, about doing it separately, and also seeing if there is a cost savings to do it, to do it all combined with one larger contractor.
And to answer her question directly, I mean, if you, if you put out a project that's much, much larger, or you combine two projects into one larger project, generally will realize some cost savings doing it that way. That's, that's a correct assumption.
Thank you for that. Okay. I don't see any other board members asking questions. Nobody from the community. So now I'll thank you once again, Mike and Danielle, and also I want to thank Sylvia and Steve Brugge for all of their work and coordination together with Lan and Triton on this. So thank you. You all make a very good team.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I am now going to shift prior to our very long business agenda. I'm going to shift to Bob for a superintendent update and any reports.
Thank you, Rena. To begin with, I, prior to the start of our meeting, had the opportunity to join the American School PTA Exec Board, just in collaboration with Dr. Leva and Mrs. Adrima, Assistant Principal, had the opportunity just to provide an update on the decision to transition last Friday to remote learning. Had the opportunity to explain to PTA Exec Board, thinking, the process, the involvement, consultation, collaboration of the medical director from Westchester County. of, of the medical director from Westchester County Department of Health. Tried to explain that there, there is no set, uh, what I would say guidelines for how we make decisions. And I anticipate that as we, uh, move through the school year under this pandemic, that, um, what's important to communicate to no one, to the board, but to our parents and staff, is that each individual, uh, event, incident, case is, is examined and reviewed, uh, in consultation with our district physician, with our nursing staff, uh, Dr. Mazzoni, who is serving now as the point person for COVID, and, um, the, the representatives of the Department of Health. And we react to and respond to this particular details of each case. And then immediately take the opportunity to communicate with our parents, our staff. I've said throughout the summer, uh, and will continue to say that health and safety is our, our number one priority. The health and safety of our students, of our staff, of our community. And it's critical that we reinforce that, um, as soon as we have confirmed information and direction and information and how to, to respond to a confirmed case, we turn that information around to the building levels, to our community. So people can make the right decision and we can respond. It's interesting, uh, last Wednesday, when we had a conference call with the medical director, we walked through, walked them through what had, had transpired over really a three, four day period, um, that we made recommendations. They either certainly confirmed or supported the recommendations. And it was important at the time to request, uh, their advice on how we approached, what I would say, post decision making, the communication around, do we continue with school and have a normal dismissal notification process? Knowing that if there is any hint of any kind of imminent health concern, emergency, that we would take the normal steps to obviously, remove anyone from our buildings to maintain safety. Um, this is really challenging for many respects because, as I said to parents, we believe a majority, if not all the cases that have been positive, um, begin outside of our schools. That is, um, the, the, the realities of the, the life experiences of our, our staff, our, our families, um, really in some ways, obviously are attributed to the positive diagnosis. And then these same students and faculty members are entering in our schools. Our focus has been to minimize risk, to kind of create the conditions for learning that minimize the number of students or staff that may be impacted, knowing that this is going to be what we have to contend with. And, uh, it's not a perfect world. I explained to Amerenik, uh, the PTA, that, you know, we have special programs at our, at the American Academy School. And so there are a number of different staff that provide services and deliver programs. And so the idea that you can isolate or in, in a perfect world minimize who might be impacted is just not realistic. We also have staff that work across the system that are housed at various buildings. And that we have to be mindful of how that impacts potential for someone to be, uh, in direct contact or not. I also think it's important to understand that, one, we are limited by health privacy of providing specific information. And so even today, when, um, uh, Dr. Milnick, uh, just informed Murray parents about a positive case, the initial reaction from, um, parents and staff is to want to know more information. And there's a limitation to what we can provide. However, I, I keep going back to, we are reporting daily statistics to the Department of Health that, um, are, are, are available to all citizens. That information is updated and gives a comprehensive breakdown of the number of positive cases, number of tested cases, people in the community as well as in schools. And so it's not about not wanting to be fully transparent. It's, it's trying to be able to work within the rules and the law and the guidelines. That said, we also know that we are in each instance providing contact tracing information to the DOH. And that, that I, as we've said, if, if parents or, or staff members are concerned, they will hear from the health, public health authorities and to really confirm, uh, in some cases, their, um, certainly contact or potential to quarantine based on what's unfolded. It's not a perfect system, but, uh, you know, we're working really hard. And I want to just stress that is our, our commitment, our intention to communicate effectively and, um, quickly relative to the information we have. And Nora will attest to the fact that sometimes we are on the phone late in the evening with the Department of Health, or we're finding out first thing in the morning, and there is a delay in the process. In many of our communications, we've been stating a date in and around the last time an individual was on school grounds. That's really to reference in some way, a public way, the distance and time that may in some ways minimize the number of individuals who will have to quarantine, or the concerns we have, or at the same time, suggest to us that we have follow-up in, in many cases where we have to monitor and see what happens. The individuals who are asymptomatic, who they may have been exposed. So, so the important point here is this is a team effort. Uh, I, I want to just say I appreciate Nora's leadership. I appreciate the, the incredible commitment of our nursing staff. I, 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 today, uh, or this evening, I mentioned that Madeline Lucas at MAS has been heroic in her efforts to, uh, address the day-to-day health needs of, of that community as, as, as far, as far as all our nurses across the system, including Dina Murphy, our nursing supervisor. Um, we are here together to create safe conditions for, uh, learning in our schools. And if, this is not a perfect design. And so some of the questions that I fielded from parents about, well, how did this happen with A and PM pods? How did this happen? So like, um, I am here to, to say clearly that I cannot, and I've been very clear to say guarantee that we are not going to face challenges. From the time period that I was presenting with Neil and Sandra, I saw through Ryan X School System that they had another positive case. Uh, earlier, you know, yesterday, Scarsdale through their PSCTs, um, exam had 80 students who had to quarantine. In many of the cases, um, we are seeing situations where staff members of students are asymptomatic at the start of the day, and by the middle or end of the day, they are symptomatic. And so it is impossible, even with our attestation and protocols, to kind of prevent this from happening. So I, I, I think it's important to let the board know and the community know that we are working as hard as possible to create safe conditions. But this is going to be unfortunately, over the next nine months, the challenges that we face as a community, as a school system. I.
Thank you for, thank you for that, um, thorough report on, I know you have more to add. But, you know, thank you, Nora. Thank you to the nurses and especially to all of you, uh, everyone, uh, who got, um, an ED and not an MD, uh, in dealing with all of this. So Bob, are you also, can you also speak a little bit about some of the, it's a nice transition to talk about some of the professional development that's gone on?
Yes, I, I, and I appreciate that. Um, so just to point out that, that, uh, in a, in a few minutes, the board will consider, uh, an agreement with the, the American Teachers Association, um, in our, in our work and partnership in, in the summer, as we were planning for our hybrid remote. We acknowledge that the design that we've put forward in, in many respects has, um, conditions that go outside the provisions in the contract language, uh, and, and for example, starting the instructional day at the elementary level in a hybrid 10 minutes early. One of the things that we anticipated and that we've now experienced is the need for sustained professional development for our teachers who are, for the first time, teaching in a blended learning environment. And that goes from teachers who are just teaching remote, teachers who are teaching hybrid and remote, and teachers who are teaching hybrid, but are streaming live to teachers. And I, I want to, uh, again, acknowledge, uh, the, the incredible dedication of our two instructional technology coaches, Jess Dancy, Mike Sumartano, have been working, um, in leading the way around the sustained professional development. The agreement and the discussion about the schedule of planning, which is consistent with many, if not all districts in our area, is to really, uh, give teachers time to focus on assessment, to focus on grade level planning, subject area planning and coursework. It's to provide, uh, what I would say just-in-time PD around the use of technology. Uh, I want to say that in a few moments, through the generosity of the Mamarone Schools Foundation, we'll talk about technology resources as part of an off-cycle grant. That is a perfect example of today, a last Friday, through a planning schedule at Mamarone Avenue, where teachers are now using and getting comfortable with technology to optimize and provide continuity of learning. So the planning schedule is critical. Um, we certainly are mindful of minutes of instruction and trying to maximize that. We're trying to find the fine balance between, uh, offering additional planning time across the next three to four months and see where we go. But, um, it is valuable time. And I will say that, um, what's impressed me the most, including Friday at American David's School, is the sharing of colleagues who are, for example, been teaching, uh, remote pods and how they're using their knowledge and expertise to share those, um, uh, really that knowledge and resources and approaches with their colleagues. So it is strengthening the system, is bringing about consistency of expectation, is providing real built-in professional time to help professionals adjust to the complexity of learning as well. So I, I wanted to, to, to mention that. I also wanted to just touch on some things that I think are quite positive. Um, we, we, we talk about the sense that this is not what we asked for, but we tried to approach this, uh, this idea of normalcy. You know, the, today was the third day of our HAMX intramurals. We had over 250 seventh grade students join our intermural programs for boys and girls soccer, cross-country and field hockey. So out of this, um, challenging times, we've been actually able to increase the participation rates for middle school through an intramural program and provide a sense of normalcy around school-based activities. We have a number of clubs and activities at the high school that are getting off the ground. And next, I, I believe this weekend, we'll have an outdoor pace performance, uh, at the high school that we invite the board and the community to participate. And hopefully the weather will hold up. So, so it is this balance between how do we invite students to kind of engage in what I would say the normal, uh, experience of schools under a pandemic, but be mindful that every day is going to bring unforeseen challenges and that it's really going to take a collective effort to get where we want to go as well. So, so, um, I, I think that's really, I want to be mindful of the time. Those are the two, um, things that I, I, I want to just, uh, point to. And, um, certainly respond to any questions. I know that Nora also wanted to just provide an update on, on the work of the crisis team. And Nora, I don't know if I.
Um, I'm just going to share those three slides, if that's okay, Bob?
Yeah. Do you have them or?
I do. I do. Oops, sorry guys, wait a sec. Okay, can everybody see that? And I'll move the, you can all see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So, um, our district-wide crisis team has been convening weekly since school closed last March. And as you can see from the list before you, our team is comprised of really respected, knowledgeable, mental health professionals from across the district, to all levels, um, as well as the broader Larchmont Mamarone community, as is reflected by the involvement of Larchmont Mamarone Community Counseling, uh, Friends of the Family, um, CRC, um, the Bereavement Center of Westchester as well. So COVID-19, we know, and we've talked about as a crisis that's just impacted the lives of not only those within our school walls, but on every street, in every household, and places of businesses all over our community. Therefore, um, we, we felt it was really essential to try to use this, um, you know, crisis as an opportunity of sorts to strengthen the ways in which we operate as one community, um, and learn new ways to take care of ourselves and everybody around us. When our team first convened, um, we focused on ways in which we could proactively prepare for the potential damage of the health crisis. Um, and then as time went on, we really started to set our sights really on four main goals, which, um, are guiding our work to this day. The first is to use the, um, group as a way to keep a pulse on the changing needs of our community. That's not only daily, weekly, monthly, you know, what are the patterns that we see? And then to collaborate on the development of multi-tiers of support, um, in response to those needs, whether they were offered, um, through school programming, through agency programming, or through emerged efforts such as Frank Locurdo joining, um, Katie Sawyer and, um, and Alan from Larchmont Mamarone Community Counseling Center just day before, um, yesterday, or actually yesterday. The third thing was to really bridge our mental health supports between school and community. So what we have in our community agencies is very strong, and what we have in our schools are strong. But the amount of time that we've really worked together to try to merge those things, um, uh, just hasn't been optimized on, I would say. And lastly, to expand and strengthen our overall schooling community partnerships. So some of our discussions, I think, um, it's fair to say, and Rena, you know, sits, um, on the committee as well. Um, some of our discussions at the beginning and, and since then have been daunting. Um, even raw, especially at the beginning, when we, we came together and we really had to process our own anxieties, our fears, our sadnesses as, as things happened. And on this slide, you'll see some of the outcomes, um, that we've worked on over the last seven months. First, we, we started with the hardest thing first, um, and we developed a protocol for how to support the community virtually. In the event that there were lives lost due to the health crisis. In the past, you know, when, when something like that happens, we've been blessed with the fact that we can open our, our doors to our schools and welcome the community in and have our community partners come in with us to offer bereavement, bereavement counseling. But there was really this big question of how do you support our community virtually, um, if something were to happen? And as we then got closer to June, um, we started to discuss ways in which we could help students and staff close out their year with more of a supportive network around them. For example, our students graduating, staff retiring, those who were experiencing anxieties relating to missing end of the year buys and as well as potentially missing beginning of the year hellos. There were lots of unknowns and there was lots of, of fear radiating around the community. And then based on the group's thinking, our community agency partners developed summer resources that would be available to our families. Um, the social workers made plans for engaging in the work of the food pantry, hunger task force, et cetera, and continued to monitor the daily, um, hotline that they had established so that we would feel like we would be there for any family that reached out. Once we returned in September, um, members of the committee developed a presentation that was done for all six faculties in the school, um, district on how to welcome our students back through the use of trauma-informed practices. And for those that might not, um, recognize the term, trauma-informed practices are those practices which help us notice and compassionately respond to the indicators of trauma, stress during our daily work with kids. And they're certainly there. And they're sometimes quite palpable, but other times you really have to, um, be, to have that sensitivity. Larchmont Mamarone Community Counseling provided tips for families, um, during these challenging times that were sent out through, um, district publications and shared broadly. Guidance counselors convened groups to identify our most vulnerable and impacted families. Um, and the social workers have been providing open Zoom sessions for a Spanish-speaking community for the purposes of providing, providing information, resources and mental health referrals to outside agencies. So I think I just, you know, I'd just like to end by saying, um, to the community, if you or your family or anyone you know is struggling, don't hesitate to reach out. There are so many people in this community, they're a part of this work. Our school psychologists, our social workers, the people on the crisis team, um, it's time for us to join together and make sure that everyone has what they need. Thanks for the opportunity, Rena and Bob. I appreciate it.
Nora, thank you. And there has been some amazing work and conversations and discussions that go on, um, with this group. And it would be great to be able to post this and also include it as some of the information that is sent out, just as a past report, uh, when we get ready for our November third meeting, which will discuss, you know, the hybrid and remote, um, you know, feedback and models. So that would be, it would be very helpful to send it out again. Um, and, you know, Debbie will, will take care of that after she has the slides, but, but thank you and, and. But thank you and thank you, Bob. Bob, is there anything else?
There's, yes, I wanted to mention that on this Thursday, we have the opportunity to launch the first of three community forums. The district equity team is seeking community feedback on our draft strategic plan. We certainly, we've had to date about 150 survey responses relative to providing comments and feedback. This is a draft plan. We are trying to encourage and certainly engage as many of our stakeholders in our broader community to participate. So that will be certainly something, for those who are listening, who'd like to participate, we ask that you fill out the survey, pre-register for the event. We have a similar event on the 28th for our Spanish-speaking families. We are working and I'm pleased that CRC is going to co-facilitate that event to really try again to get as many of our parents' community members to participate. And then on November 4th, I'll reach out to our alumni and working with our alumni database to try and encourage as many of our alums to engage in a conversation, something that's important. But lastly, I just want to give Annie a chance. I know Annie has spent a considerable amount of time in our schools doing, working on her learning walk. And just to touch on, in some ways, to foreshadow or at least preview the 11-3 meeting about the innovation that's happening and how teachers are already faring. So Annie, would you like to just give an update?
Sure, thanks, Bob. I just have to say that, first of all, it was just spectacular to welcome kids back in person. And the learning curve, as Bob described a little while ago, talking about the additional planning time that we are able to build in, has just been invaluable. I think Bob alluded to this, but at Mamaronek Avenue on Friday afternoon, as teachers learned about the closure and that they were suddenly going to take these in-person pods remote, there was just a wonderful groundswell of effort on the part of the already remote teachers to lead mini workshops for their, you know, for their colleagues, just amazing camaraderie. And I was really deeply moved. I was texting Bob while I was in the session because it was incredibly moving to see just how much teachers have learned and implemented over the last several months. I think in some cases, they've lost sight of it themselves, you know, but for someone just dropping in on this session, it was just remarkable. So I was at Murray today. We've been with Jeremy, with Dr. Barker and Dr. Melnick and Mr. Porochelli. We are rolling forward our typical protocol of making these, what we call learning walks, sort of semi-formal visits to each school. Of course, now those look very different with all of the safety protocols in place. But we can report as of this morning that the teachers are creating those magically warm in-person environments, the student work is vibrant. The kids we had been seeing, you know, I would have to say, at all levels, kids incredibly observant of the protocols, some of the issues that we thought we might see of difficulty enforcing the masking and social distancing just honestly hasn't happened, to the point that we've been noticing kids being a little bit subdued, which I think just makes sense. You know, and I'm sort of building on Nora's comments of a moment ago, that this is, you know, an unprecedented moment in time. But the care and concern that teachers are extending, the trust that parents and family members are placing in us, it's just really remarkable. And we're seeing now, I look forward to an opportunity to report, I think probably at the December study session, on the assessment results. Reading literacy assessments have been taking place all through the month of September and culminating now by this Friday. So all of those data are being entered and will be studied. Math assessments have already taken place, so at the elementary level. So the things that we spoke about over the summer, we're really proud through the ingenuity and dedication of teachers are happening. And we look forward to a chance to report to you and to the community on the next phase. Once we have those assessment data, what does that targeted instruction look like? Again, just at Murray this morning, seeing two very different ways, different teachers were pulling, convening guided reading groups based on the data that they had assessed. One on this feature called Tech Tuesdays, I guess I learned about a ritual at Murray. So in one group, kids were using their Chromebooks in the room. And in another group, just down the hall, kids were literally physically distanced, using cubbies as markers out in the hallway with the teacher sitting directly across them. So, you know, different ingenious ways of achieving the same important outcome. So we just continue to be so heartened by the commitment and efforts of our students, of our families, and especially our teachers.
Thank you for that, Annie. There was a lot in those, all of those reports. I appreciate, know that we're going, we're going pretty long. But were there questions on anything that was just reported? And then we can move on to our 16-item business agenda.
Just a quick question. First of all, thank you all for all that you're doing. Nora, thank you so much for the taking care of the emotional well-being of our students right now and our faculty. It's really appreciated. Bob, just one quick question. When there is a lag, which I know can happen in reporting, is that lag on our end? Or is that lag on a parent's end? Because obviously, we rely on our parents to report. If you could just speak to that, so there's some clarity on that.
Nora, you want to touch on that? I mean, I'll be happy as well.
So, you know, I'm not, what I will tell you is this, as soon as we get a call or an email, we're on it. If it's 9:30 at night, I mean, I can't even tell you what we've been doing. We don't wait till the next morning for anything. We've contacted DOH late at night. Nothing, nobody has entered the building after we have found that, been made aware that there's even the potential of there being a problem. In fact, we've aired on the side of caution and had people stay home when we didn't know for sure. So I would say, I give you my word, there has been no lag on the part of the district.
And if I can build on that, the part of that, to your point or questionary on it, the lag time in many cases is about the reporting that comes to us. In most cases, even in consultation with the Department of Health, we are asking for permission to proactively inform others who may not know because we know information that we think would be pertinent to their family dynamics. And so we're, if anything, we're on the proactive side. A lot of the information, because people, you know, a lot of what we're doing each day is tracking people down to find out why a child's not in school, what we've heard about a family member, what we've heard about out-of-state travel. And it's really until we get confirmed information that's valid that we can then respond.
I'll tell you another thing that the DOH actually said to us, we're ahead on the contact tracing. We're getting to it before the DOH is getting to it, when it involves kids in our school.
You know, I think you guys have done a remarkable, remarkable job. I just think, I think it actually really is incumbent on our families to report timely and knowing that you guys will then do everything in your power.
And the last thing I'm going to say to Nora's point, in cases where we're unsure because there's been no confirmed information, we are building contract tracing information so we can respond and communicate instantly, based on what we think, you know, exposure or a contact, proximate contacts would be. So, you know, I sent him a report, when we articulate a person's time of last in the building, it's really just to reference, in some ways assure, reassure parents and staff that, you know, there may be minimal impact because it's been X amount of days and not to correlate that with our failure to hold on to information and not share. So to your point, it's just a reference point. Because we think by that reference point, knowing that it's 48 hours, symptomatic time, confirmed case time, that will help actually ease people's minds relative to how is this, how may this impact my family and a child, friendships and things like that, so.
Rena, we do have somebody who would like to ask a question, Sally Cantwell.
Okay, go ahead, Sally, and then we're going to go to our business agenda.
Good evening. I just want to thank all of you this evening for being there. Two things I wanted to mention. One, on behalf of the PTA council, we just really want to thank the nurses, the teachers. We want to thank the administration and the parents for all the work and all the, you know, the time that we're spending together and working as a unit because we just need to be together at this point in time and be as one and not divisive and not trying to, trying to find out, you know, do a witch hunt, which I think is, would be the worst thing to do. So I just want to put it out there and say thank you to all of you on behalf of all of our PTAs. The other thing is, when I look at all these numbers, I think one thing that would be very helpful is if the New York State page could actually be on our website, if that was possible. Because I think people go to different sites to hunt down information. And I think the more open that we can be and honest, that would be preferred by myself and others. That's it. Thank you very much.
It's a great suggestion, Sally. I appreciate it. We'll take care of that link. We've been referring those emails from parents about asking for statistics to say, these are submitted on a daily basis and updated by the Department of Health and are the most accurate and I would say inclusive statistics around this, if that's possible.
The other thing that I would just like to mention is that the PTA units across the whole district really would like to be involved and to be very helpful. You know, we have very many different connections in all the different schools. And I know today for myself, you know, we reached out to the social workers, to Lissy and to Durandi from CRC to make sure that parents, you know, folks that were, you know, in quarantine from NAS or wherever they were, if they needed food, we wanted to get them food because many of us are involved in the Larchmont and Mamaronek Hunger Task Force that distributes every Tuesday.
That's actually something, Sally, that our last crisis team meeting came out and Lissy offered to take the lead on working with agencies to make sure families were getting food and other supplies that they needed. So thank you for reaching out to her.
But I please.
All right, Sally, I think we lost the connection with Sally. Sally, if there's anything else, you can email us. Thank you for all of the work of our PTAs and parents. And in particular, I know how much work has gone into working with the Hunger Task Force and meeting the needs of our community. So thank you for that. With that, I am going to turn to our business agenda for a resolution for transfer of unexpected funds. Whereas the Mamaronek Union Free School District funded the following capital projects with bond proceeds, and whereas each of the projects has been deemed completed, and there are remaining funds in the amount of $228,302.40, which some remains unexpended for its intended purposes. And whereas these funds can be returned to the debt service fund to be applied only to the payment of the principal and interest on such bonds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the transfer for, excuse me, of unexpended funds of $228,302.40 to the debt service fund in accordance with this resolution. Can I have?
So move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Sam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
B, memorandum of agreement between the Mamaronek Union Free School District and the Mamaronek Teachers Association. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes and approves a memorandum of agreement between the Mamaronek Union Free School District and the Mamaronek Teachers Association concerning provisions related to teaching conditions, contractual length of day and time during the contractual day dedicated to planning period, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said formal agreement. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Christian.
And this was an item that Bob addressed in his report just a few minutes earlier. Can I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And item, and thank you to the teachers' union. You've been working very closely with us throughout this pandemic and previous, and prior and to, and when we were in school shutdown in March, being involved every step of the way. And we appreciate those efforts. C, resolution to accept an off-cycle grant award from the Mamaronek Schools Foundation. Recommended action that the Board of Education accepts an off-cycle grant award of $74,951 for the 2020-2021 school year from the Mamaronek Schools Foundation for teacher technology kits, grant amount in the amount of $74,951. I don't have a resolution here, but be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the off-cycle grant award of $74,951. Can I have a motion?
So move, Paul.
Second?
Conglatis.
Bob, do you want to just speak briefly?
I mean, I didn't know if we were going to read the executive content to just describe this. Would you like me to read this or just summarize it?
If you would just summarize it, I think that
First of all, I want to say we are certainly in gratitude of the schools, Mamaronek Schools Foundation for the incredible partnership, for their willingness to consider an off-cycle grant, but most importantly, for their support and tremendous gift and donation to support this off-cycle grant. We had the opportunity, they actually, early on in the summer, reached out to me to talk about how they could help and support the success of the reopening of our schools. And in discussions about the importance of anticipating the need for technology and to support innovation and quality of instruction, they came forward with this tremendous, tremendous support to allow us to equip 470, essentially all teachers across the system with a technology kit that will really, what I would say, is provide for creativity and quality of instruction. This includes in providing every teacher with a writable Dell laptop, a second interactive screen, document cameras, headsets and wireless keyboards. Provide not only a solution as we kind of ebb and flow between in-person and remote teaching, but really transforming the future of classroom instructions over the next seven years in the future through giving us this, I would say, tremendous resource. And so this is in combination with district funds. I wanted to take an opportunity, just if I can, share a screen. Earlier today, Jess Dancy worked at Mamaronek Avenue School. As you can see here, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see a Dell laptop. On the right is the second writable or interactive screen. So in this particular case, Jessie is writing on the second screen and meanwhile, conducting the lesson on her laptop. And we see that the incredible features of being able to take a screen and use it flat to write on as that, or at the same time, use a Dell writable laptop and also provide the flexibility of moving around a classroom to use this as, what I would say, both a laptop and a writable device, as well as using a document camera. So this is a tremendous gift to our students, to our staff. We appreciate the generosity. And we will use these across the system, not only this year, but the years to come. And I also want to say this will have a direct impact on how we think about our annual budgets in the next few years in terms of being able to now untether our teachers across the system from the CPU and not have to really, in some ways, rely on district budgetary funds on a consistent basis in those technology line items. So this is just awesome. And as you can tell, we were excited and Annie can attest to today. Mike Semartano came in upon seeing and testing out these, the screen where you see Jess's fraction work and say, this is going to be transformative. So again, thank you for the foundation. Thank you for the Thank you for the, the members of our community who've donated to the foundation and thanks for this wonderful.
Thanks, Bob. Can I have a motion to accept the grant? I'm not a motion, all in favor of accepting the grant?
Aye.
Aye.
And it doesn't get better, Schools Foundation, than hearing the words awesome and transformative from Dr. Shapps in one presentation. So, so thank you very much. D, resolution to authorize the City School District of the City of New Rochelle to utilize and share via piggybacking the Marinac School District's home-to-school transportation contract. Whereas the district administration received a request from the City School District of the City of New Rochelle for use of the school district's home-to-transportation contract to transport New Rochelle students to an out-of-district location to which the school district is already providing transportation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Marinac Union Free School District hereby consents to and authorizes the City School District of the City of New Rochelle to utilize and share via piggybacking the Marinac Union Free School District's home-to-school transportation contract to an out-of-district location to which the school district is already providing transportation pursuant to the terms and conditions thereof. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Gladys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, resolution to an extend an agreement with Suburban Carding Company for the 2020-21, 2021. One of these years, I'll get that right, school year. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to extend its agreement with Suburban Carding Co. for an additional one-year period at no additional cost to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the extension of its agreement with Suburban Carding Company for an additional one-year period in accordance with the attached proposal from Suburban Carding Company. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president to execute the necessary documents to effectuate said extension with the term to expire on October 20th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I do want to tell the community that all these items are posted on board docs and the board did have a chance to review all of these prior to our meeting. F, resolution to an extend an agreement with Blues Way Pest Control for the 2021 school year. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to an extend, to extend its agreement with Blues Way Pest Control for an additional one-year period at no additional cost to the district. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the extension of its agreement with Blues Way Pest Control for pest extermination services for an additional one-year period in accordance with the attached proposal from Blues Way Pest Control. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president to execute the necessary documents to effectuate said extension for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Arianna.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G, resolution to an extend, to extend an agreement with Sound Applications Limited for the 2020-2021 school year. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to extend its agreement with Sound Applications Limited for an additional final one-year period at no additional cost to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the extension of its agreement with Sound Applications Limited for an additional one-year period in accordance with the attached proposal from Sound Applications Limited. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president to execute the necessary documents to effectuate said extension for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Christian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
H, resolution to participate, to participate in cooperative bid for the purchase of various supplies, services, materials and equipment. Whereas the Board of Education of the Marinac Union Free School District received the award documents for the bids listed above, naming the Marinac Union Free School District as one of their participants through November 30th, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Marinac Union Free School District accepts the appended list of awarded vendors. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Arianna.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item I, resolution authorizing piggybacking for the purchase of athletic and physical education equipment and supplies with related accessories from Flag House. Whereas the school district is permitted to utilize the contract with the state of Minnesota in accordance with terms and conditions of the bid requirements of the Genu, General Municipal Law, Section 103. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the use of the contract for the purchase of athletic and physical education equipment and supplies. Excuse me, one second. Okay, we have to make sure that all these contracts don't expire in October, so we have to go through. With related accessories from Flag House, a contract let by the state of Minnesota in accordance with the requirements of General Municipal Law, Section 103 for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Gladys.
All in favor?
Aye.
J, resolution regarding statement of benefits. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools on behalf of the Board of Education to execute a certain revised compensation and benefit statements, which statements identify the compensation and benefits to be provided to certain unaffiliated employees for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Gladys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
K, resolution to execute a consent order and judgment. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes its attorneys Shaw, Perelson, May and Lambert to execute a consent order and judgment in tax sursurary proceeding caption, Harry Spadaro versus Townham Marinac and the Marinac Union Free School District. Be it further resolved that the Board authorizes the refund of taxes as required by the terms of the consent order and judgment. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second? Anybody? Second?
Second, Christian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item L, resolution of the Board of Education of the Marinac Union Free School District to commence legal action against the New York City Department of Education. Whereas the Marinac Union Free School District timely submitted invoices to the New York City Department of Education requesting the payment for the cost of services provided to students residing within the New York City Department with, within the zone of New York City Department of Education. And whereas despite the representations that payment would be forthcoming, the New York City Department of Education has failed to tender payment. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing, it is hereby resolved that the board attorney is hereby authorized to commence a legal action against the New York City Department of Education and all potentially liable parties to recover the cost of the services provided to students within, excuse me, residing within New York City. Two, the Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations is authorized to execute all documents necessary to commence such action on behalf of the board. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Arianna.
Bob, do you want to just briefly? Just briefly mention, I mean, just it, it states that there were, typically, we get reimbursed for special education services. Or actually, why don't you just give a little bit of background on this?
Want me to do it, Bob?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the school district perform services, provide services to non-district students at non-public schools, services such as health services. We provide nurses, we provide supplies, we provide related services, special education services. And as a result, we bill the school districts of residence of the non-public school students. And New York City is notorious for making it difficult to collect. And so we have requested that our attorneys start an action to make a, and they have made a claim for the monies that are owed to the district. The city, what they do is they often will ask for notarized statements from the families saying that they live in the city so that they can verify the residency before the city pays it. But the parents have no vested interest in helping us and it becomes a very difficult form to get a parent to submit. So we have asked Ingrid Smith to help us in the collection.
Thank, thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item M, agreement between the Marinac Union Free School District Board of Education and the MHS, MHS Class of 1954. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the donation for said scholarship in the amount of $2,000. Be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Marinac Union Free School District hereby authorizes the board president to execute an agreement with the MHS Class of 1954 to create the MHS Class of 1954 scholarship in honor of Jim Horkeimer. And it will be named the Jim Horkeimer Scholarship. And be it further resolved that the board hereby accepts the $2,000 donation and the terms and conditions set forth in the attached agreement. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second, Arianna.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item N, agreement between the Marinac Union Free School District Board of Education and North Six Groups LLC. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the agreement for the Lauren Nicole Rosetta Fund, which will begin in the 2020-2021 academic year and continuing through the 2022 and 2023 academic year. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Marinac Union Free School District hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said agreement with the North Six Groups LLC in honor of Lauren Nicole Rosetta as per the attachment. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second? Rob?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nora, do you want to say anything about this briefly?
I'm sure Lauren, it's, this is very dear to my heart. Lauren Rosetta was a student of mine, actually, when I was a special ed teacher at the Homics. She passed at age 23. And her family of educators also wanted to give back to families who have special needs students who are not able to provide the resources that they were able to provide for Lauren. So it's, it's exciting and it, it's wonderful to see that they wanted to do this on behalf of her.
Thank you, and, and thank you so much to the Rosetta family. Item O, resolution to accept a donation of a mural from Chatsworth Avenue School PTA. Recommended action that the Board of Education accepts the donation from the Chatsworth Avenue PTA of a mural to be painted by artist Loic Eckerlessi and further accepts the details and design of the mural as per the attachment. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Arianna.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and thank you, Chatsworth Avenue PTA for what we're sure will be a beautiful mural that will brighten up the outside of the building. Item P, resolution regarding school policies and executive orders. Whereas due to the threat to public health caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the district is required to comply with executive orders promulgated by the governor and directives issued by the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Education Department, which may be inconsistent with district policies and administrative regulations. And whereas during this period of time, to the extent that any district policy or administrative regulation is inconsistent with executive orders or directives of the DOH or SED, the district will be operating in accordance with those orders and directives as well as the district's reopening plan for 2020-2021 adopted pursuant to such executive orders and directives. Be it resolved that were any provisions of district policies and/or administrative regulations conflict with executive orders, DOH or SED directives or the reopening plan, they are temporarily suspended to the extent necessary to comply with such executive orders, DOH or SED directives and/or the reopening plan. Can I have a motion?
Some move, Paul.
Second?
Second, Sam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have made it through the business agenda.
This is like the hurricane season running out of letters. We are running out of letters.
Okay, turning to future business. Upcoming meetings. On Tuesday, November 3rd, there'll be a Board of Education study session. The topic is going to be hybrid and remote learning and the goals and objectives. Tuesday, November 17th, at our Board of Education Business Meeting, the topic will be a fiscal update together with short and long-term budget planning. And then on December 1st at 7:00 PM, we're going to be discussing a high school elective program. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move, Paul.
Second, Arianna.
Everybody, thank you very much. Thank you for, for all, all in favor. I still glad it's ready to, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, LMC. Thank you to our administrators for those reports. And again, to Dr. Jerry McGibbons and to LAN Associates for their reports. And with that, we'll see you, for those of you who are participating on Thursday for the district equity team, and after that on November 30.